We're good? All right, six point, we need to call to order please stand pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm still going to read our mission statement in partnership with the communities. The mission of the Doorland Public School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong learners. A roll call. We have most of our board here. Amy and Nicole are on vacation, so they're enjoying their time. And Superintendent Hudson is here as well as Mary Ann Martin. Welcome and welcome our district on the staff. So, do we need changes to the agenda?
I don't see Tracy here. It's our custodial report. I'm not sure I can give you some updates, but I suppose.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Maintenance, I will give you, so other than that, no.
Okay. I don't have a motion. I got Brittany first, Laura, you want to be second? All those in favor say aye. Post? Public comments, rebel recognition. Don't think there's any comments. Any rebel recognition?
Sumoreca is kind of wrapping up, I think. Trap shooting was successful, I believe. I don't, I apologize.
Two kids that I think made it to state.
They did make it to state. They were talking about this morning.
Alex Mather and J. Fortier.
And who was that?
J. Fortier.
J. Fortier, okay.
And that was Nationals.
And who's going to Nationals?
That was Nationals.
Oh, that was Nationals, I'm sorry.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, so I know that they were just wrapping up, I just went through that. Fishing lake is cooking, so we're all catching fish, having fun.
Yeah, that's awesome.
There's only twelve terminals here. This last week, so I'll take person for that.
Awesome.
Good. Fun, fun. All right, we'll move on to reports. The CEIS report. Our favorite Mary Ann.
So, you're probably wondering, what is CEIS?
I was.
Yes, so you guys got the information with the board, with your information from board lately?
I believe so, yeah.
About CEIS? So, this is a new requirement this year with CEIS. And what CEIS stands for is coordinated early intervention services. So, it's through the Department of Ed. And so DGF School District has received notification of three-year status for significant disproportionality in racial and ethnic groups in special education. And they break it down in our area as Hispanic or Latino students identified as having specific learning disabilities and are classified as having three-year status. So, what that means for our total district, our population of students, and then our population within special ed and the number of special ed students for specific learning disability, we have a higher disproportionate number of Hispanic or Latino kids in that specific area. So, that's, and we have three-year status. And we've been three, this is our third three-year status. So, we've been working on this for several years. But a new requirement for the 2023-24 school year is to make a public report on why we're falling under this disproportionality. So, I thought that I would, we're waiting at this board meeting to talk about that. And then in May, I'll report again about our numbers. So, I'll tell you what we did last year, just so that you kind of have understanding. And when I report back in May, you'll see what I'm talking about. So, with that, DGF is required to set aside 15% of our federal Part B 611 and 619 funds for coordinated early intervention services. So, we have to write a plan up and, you know, send that to MDE and it has to get approved. So, last year, so our plan for this year is to use the 15% set aside to pay for early intervention services at DGF Elementary. The district will determine if the students need services or support under CEIS, if they are at or below that 24% on the STAR assessment for reading and/or math. The Title I interventionists build on the foundational skills that the title teacher and or general ed teachers have identified needing to be worked on for each individual student. The needs will be derived from the STAR assessment data. The Title I teachers will oversee the work of the interventionists and provide direct supervision of the interventionists. The STAR assessment will be used to monitor the students' response, responses to interventions, and the progress monitoring will happen on a monthly basis. The classroom teacher and the interventionist will also use formal and informal assessments to monitor progress that will take place monthly. The interventionist and the general ed teachers will meet monthly to review progress monitoring and determine if the student has a continuing need for CEIS support. If the student has a continuing need, they will move forward with services. If not, the student will no longer receive that support. Through the progress monitoring, if the student continues to test above the 24% over two months, the student will be discontinued from CEIS services. After six weeks of prescribed interventions with no progress, the interventionist and general education teacher will refer the student to the student intervention team for referral to special education. If the student is making progress, this will also, if the student is making progress, this will also be discussed at the student intervention team meeting to determine what the progress is, if there is a continuing need for CEIS services or if CEIS should be discontinued. The impact of a CEIS fund will be measured and monitored at the local level by the district keeping track of the number of students receiving CEIS in the specific subgroup described above. The district will also track the number of students within the subgroup who have been dismissed from CEIS services and the number referred for special education evaluation. So, for the 22-23 school year, we had 21 students who received services through the Title I interventions in that subgroup. We had two students referred for special education evaluation and both qualified for services. So, in May, I'll report back to you and I'll report on those numbers that we see this year. Because what MDE is looking for then with that set aside money, how are we working towards to reduce that number going into special ed? But also, you have to think about too, the kids that have already been identified. We can't control what kids come in and out of our district. And we do have a lot of move-ins, move-outs. And so, if we have kids that are coming into our district that are already identified, we're going to continue to provide services and provide their needs. And also, we're not going to not qualify someone just because we're disproportionate. We're doing what's best with the testing and what the students need.
What happens, Mary Ann, with Shannon comes, you know, I'm a student. I come into the district and I qualify. Then I leave. Does that affect our number? Or is my number count because I was there? Doesn't matter if I leave. Do you know how the state's measuring that?
I believe they would measure it for our December first child count.
Okay, and then at the end of the year though, then that number should not be reflected, correct? If I leave and left?
If you, I would say, does that get reported again at the end of the school year? Or would it be the next?
Is it during the Mars reporting? I'm just curious on how that.
I believe it's during the Mars reporting.
Okay, so we're going to have some October, we're going to have a December. Okay, so it should show that if I leave, that number should be taken off.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. The state sometimes does not track students very well.
Because we get these.
And we get penalized on that.
Because we get these numbers in March. That's when they determine whether we're, whether we're disproportionate in March. So, they would take our December Mars numbers. So, if someone left in March, they would already be counted as ours.
That makes sense, but it's kind of curious, so.
And what stage is this?
Well, it's for all of our special ed students, but we're focusing on early intervention. And so, it would be kids.
Kindergarten?
Yeah, it'd be kindergarten through fourth grade at the elementary. So, what we're doing with our set aside money is paying, like last year it paid for our Title I para and for one of our Title I technically certified teacher.
Teacher, yeah.
Who came back.
So, is this 21 kids that?
That are in that.
K four, or is it the?
No, it's K, it's K four who are in that subgroup. So, it's not in that subgroup. Yes, so.
Thank you.
So, when we, because Brooke has to, I give, Brooke and I work together. And because Brooke has to report everything on Mars, these kids are coded differently with different code in their Mars so that MDE can track how many kids that we provided services to. So, and all of this information that I've read to you is within our, on our application. It's called an application even though it's mandatory.
It's mandatory.
How we plan on doing this. And I believe in the information that I gave you. It shows our numbers all the way from 2017 to 2022. And in 2017, we were at 5.046 and we are now at 3.884. And let me see, if it's, I believe it's anything above.
We just got the cover sheet, Mary Ann, I think.
Oh, okay, okay. So, the, that's all right. You know, I'm not as smart as all of these people at MDE. There's like this, they calculate the standard risk ratio and their alternative risk ratio, how they determine everything and they have all the numbers. So, but, so our numbers are getting lower, but I believe we have to get to like 3.2 or 3.3. And right now, we are, we are at 3.84 for 2022. And that is our lowest number in the past five years.
I'm in the right direction.
Actually, the last six years. So, we're going in the right direction. So, that's a positive. So, I'll report back that information in.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
And does anybody else have any other questions on that?
I know you said there are 21 kids in this subgroup. How big is the group?
Our total subgroup, yes. For 2022, our Hispanic or Latino subgroup for enrollment of DGF students, this is general and special ed is 138. And then our specialized students with IEPs in that subgroup, six years to 21 years old are 37. So, I mean, so really, it depends on like how big your total population for your school. So, like a larger district might not be disproportionate even though they have a larger, but they're overall.
Yeah, number is higher.
Yeah. And in order for a subgroup to be counted, you have to be higher than 10 kids. So, we have more than 10 kids. So, if we had a subgroup that's lower than 10, than 10 kids, it doesn't, it just kind of gets deleted out. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, six point two custodial report.
Well, I'll share a little information of the custodial. That's okay with you, you're doing a great job. We have some, one that will be going on leave here shortly that has a baby coming. So, that'll be exciting. And one thing we talked about. Is that Tracy and I visited today and Mary Ann wasn't part of it as well. We talked about, do we need to put a sign up after the local day signs go down? To put one of those signs up that the district's hiring because we need six paras. We need some custodial help still.
Six paras, and that's just for special ed? And Tracy's going to need some?
For early childhood too with Rebel Kids Care. We have 30 students that are going to be in a part of that for sure every day. And so, she needs to get some of those. So, we're just wondering if that, she's going to check on the pricing. We haven't made any decisions yet, but. And then we also, Eileen needs another transportation person that one fell through that we needed. So, we thought, you know what, maybe we should just put something out there. Everybody's used to looking at local day signs. Maybe they'll check the week after and whatnot. So, yeah, so there's going to be some, somebody will be on leave. So, coverage in that has been good. Our students obviously are helping all summer. They just help a great deal. She talks about them all the time, helping our full-time people. So, yeah, overall, it's going well. And we just need a few more.
Maintenance report.
Maintenance met with them this morning. They're doing well, they're really cleaning up this back. If you notice, the connects boxes are all gone, even the one over in the south field, they're all gone. Now we have it shifted, all this stuff around. They cleaned all the steel out, all those door, extra door frames, and there's some bricks. So, that stuff, I visited with them today. They're going to start taking pictures of that and go to auction. So, we can hopefully, well, that's the fault. Our one garage back here, the track garage, that's got some of the lights that are left over from the project, some other miscellaneous leftovers that we have. So, they're going to start taking pictures of that stuff as well. So, that can go out to auction and we can get something from that. Maintenance, what other things? So, that's been a lot of what they're doing is cleaning up that stuff. They're going to do some whiteboards coming up, retweaking a room here in the high school for Schultz's new math room. It was the old fax room, so they're going to start taking cabinets out of there. So, they're doing that. Yeah, overall, it's going well too. Yeah, oh, and then the, I see, I didn't, I didn't know if it was going to be a part of my report or not. But under their building and grounds director, we interviewed, Tracy and I interviewed last Thursday. Went well, I offered it to someone today. He is coming over on Friday. He wants to tour the buildings and look at the buildings. He's really excited. He was honest and said, I do have another place. I'm waiting to hear back from him as well that he interviewed at. But he said, I really liked their interview, I'd really like to come Friday. And so, I know, I said, for sure, I want you to make an informed decision. So, I'll be meeting with him on Friday afternoon and touring the buildings and then kind of telling him what our benefits are because that's something he's really in tune to finding out what are the benefits and pay. So, I'll meet with him Friday, hopefully that all goes well. And it sounds like he can start, if it all works out, he accepts, he can start pretty quick. So, so a couple of weeks I would say for sure if he would accept and it goes well. Anyway. So, that's good news. Any questions on any of those custodial maintenance or building grounds?
All right, six point four board committee reports, personnel committee. Negotiations is pretty much what we've been doing.
I think so. I think Nicole normally reports that.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Trying to get out of somewhere.
No.
I mean, negotiations really had a chance from the last board meeting.
Correct.
I think the good news is we're getting really close on language. And then we can start talking about dollars and cents. We meet here tonight and then we meet on the 24th.
Yep.
So, hoping to get, it'd be great to get it done before the school year starts. I think we might be able to.
And then we also briefly discussed, the position is on here nine point six, about the certified preschool teacher for two days a week slash substitute teacher for three days a week. So, we talked to Shannon about that. We all felt that would be a valuable position to host and go for. There was no other, I mean, just the concerns about not having meeting paras, meeting employees.
And long-term subs for.
Long-term, yeah, long-term subs for.
Well, we might have one long-term sub that's, anyway, that was a former teacher that retired that might come and do that for us. I talked to Brittany and Wayne again today about them and they have two other names that they're going to reach out to. They hope that they can convince to come on as a short-term, so. Or I guess a long-term sub.
I don't think there was anything else that I could.
We talked about the building grounds director, but I don't recall.
I think we just knew we were going to move forward.
Keep looking at them.
Go forward and so I'm happy to hear that you had a couple applicants and good interviews.
Yep, they were.
That's good.
I just had a quick question. Yeah, I said that your meeting, the personnel meeting is on the July 24th date that I have budgeted. Any other?
Well, yeah, we have negotiations. It'll go like this tonight. We had a policy before the board meeting and we have the board meeting and then we negotiate after. So, on that evening, our policy, sorry, budget committee will be before the board meeting and then the board meeting and then negotiations. Am I correct?
Okay, this says at the conclusion of the board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to change that, I'm sorry.
So, we need, so budget would be before.
Yeah, five, yeah.
Easily confused.
It's very.
Very confusing.
Negotiations is always a tricky, when we get into negotiations and we're trying to get it all done on one night. Okay, perfect. Facilities transportation.
Exactly.
Facilities transportation.
Well, we met with the transportation contractors with some. Because we meant, I don't think it's changed since the last board meeting.
I don't think it has, you guys.
I think we updated the last board meeting.
You did.
Okay, so nothing's changed. We did meet with the contractors, the facilities and transportation committee with Shannon. And then I think Shannon did meet with them again this morning to continue negotiations.
Yep.
So, there's a tentative agreement, correct?
Correct, yep, there is a tentative agreement with them. We came to this morning. We did share the language and the contract changes per those numbers. I told them the board would have to approve it, so it's not approved yet. We'll discuss it. But they're looking through it to make sure the language is right. And if they would agree to it, then you can have a board action on the 24th, I would hope. So, that's my hope on that. But yeah, it did go well this morning. And I do appreciate Amy, Mike and Brittany the other day when they did attend. I thought that meeting went well. We had good communication. Each one of you had shared a little bit insight. They appreciated that too, they did express that today. And so, yeah, it was good.
Great. And we hit our board work session. Thank you all for being there. I thought it was a great day. I feel like we kind of had a good discussion on working on our strategic plan. I mean, you guys are going to do with the minutia of it because you're the ones that live it and breathe it every day, but I felt like there was good discussion. And anything else to add?
Yeah, I guess I just, again, I'll just reiterate this so the public knows too. You did my evaluation during that time. And I appreciate that conversation and keeping that direction and that movement forward. I appreciate your support and thank you for that. We did meet today too with the admin team about the strategic plan. About, okay, now we need to get to work, get it aligned. I'm, I'm a little guarded as to whether or not we can be ready for the start of school because I also don't want to implement it when it's not quite ready. I want to make sure that we're all on board and you guys get to see it too and say, hey, that looks good. It's okay, I just, I just want to make sure it's good. And it's just a tough time right now to get everybody together and it's a lot of work. And so, I gave them a task today, each one of them, is to say, hey, take what we have here now and look at your areas and really be specific, including the kitchen, including the transportation. I had Eileen and Shannon there too, including custodial, including, you know, this is everybody, right? We're all in this, so, yeah, it was, it was a good conversation, but there's a lot of work to do and.
And I think just to have another meeting, maybe just have a meeting just for strategic planning.
It's going to be important going forward.
Yeah, it sounds good. Anybody have anything else? All right, superintendent report, six point five.
Yeah, so I guess, where am I, right here? Admin meeting, so that's kind of a big part of today. We did talk about the strategic plan. We talked a lot about next fall and where we're dropping off, when we're, where we're picking up, what time the shuttles are, breakfast, so Shannon was there, dishes for breakfast here. Glendon, Dilworth, what, and Eileen, so we're just trying to get all of that dialed in. We talked a lot about, because I just want it to be done. And so, we can start getting this information out to parents in August and be ready and organizing with it. We are going to drop off on Park Avenue for the Glendon site. We had a lot of discussion about how to make sure those doors are safe. We're going to have people there, we're going to have patrols out there. And just how that, the logistics of that. And I was really happy with how that went. We're going to have our high school students all park in the back here. And our, our plan is, in our discussion today is, we're going to label our parking lots just like other campuses do. So, there will be areas for student parking and areas for staff parking. So, our plan is this is going to be A, parking lot A right here. This is one that we always park at for our board meetings. That'll be for staff only. B is right across between the two garages. That'll be parking lot B, staff only. Students can park in C, which means from there, all the rest of the way. And then they need to enter through door one, that needs to be their safe. And then parking lot D on the far end is going to be staff only for those. On the north side, that'll be staff only. And that's pretty much where they park now. So, we're going to have A, B, C, D. And then it's going to be as simple as students, your parking lot is C. Here it is. It's that whole middle section. They're a little nervous that it might get filled up. So, if we have to spill over, we'll spill over into B, which is right here. We're trying to, at one point of entry, drop off, parents drop off and pick up. We did not discuss this road back here, if it's going to be a one-way and which way. Right now, we just talked about parking and making sure that people know that we're going to drop off here. So, all these little kids that walk to school from Glendon or get dropped out by parents, they can eat and have breakfast here. I'm sorry, I need to back up. The walkers and those that get dragged off can eat breakfast in Glendon. So, then when the shuttles go to Dilworth from here with those little kids, there will be a para that's going to walk them up to the bus. Kent and Joe and Katie told us today they'll make sure there's a para there. And okay, here we go, little guys, line up, we're going to go up to the shuttles. So, there will be somebody that'll help our five-year-olds and six-year-olds so they don't get lost. There will be somebody walking them. So, that's what we spent a lot of time on coordinating and planning. Once the school year starts, we'll have to evaluate that a little bit and make sure, but make sure our staff knows where they're parking. Could a staff member park in parking lot C? Yes. And walk straight in, there's going to be some of that. We're just trying to make sure, also then for our events, if our staff are gone, we don't have all the students parked here in our basketball games or volleyball games or football games, we have all of our kids parked by the front door. And we have 55-year-olds and 60 and 70-year-olds walking all the way across. We want to try to make sure this is more available for our public. So, that was that. We talked a lot about expectations for our teachers in the MC8 scores. The principals met earlier today about that and trying to get a clear message. Teacher evaluation, teacher mentoring, we talked about that. Just a lot on the plate. Some policy changes, John talked about that with technology. Food service, we talked about on that spelling. Summer feeding, you guys saw that update last Friday or last Thursday. Yeah, there's a lot of getting ready for the ball. Handbooks, we talked a lot about handbooks too, they're still working on them. Making sure that language is correct with some policy changes through MSBA with cell phone policies. So, Joe and Katie are going to work through that with Kent. So, yeah. That was kind of our admin meeting, it was a lot today.
We'll have breakfast on August 28th if anybody wants to come to that. At this site, at that site, and that will start at 7:45.
Yeah, that was the other thing we talked about, the fall workshop schedule. And a new teacher orientation schedule, August 22nd. The 28th is the first workshop and the breakfast, yeah. So, we talked a lot about making sure that gets all scheduled too and organized. Yeah. Construction update, you can see the budget in here, we're getting closer. It's similar to what it was last time as far as what we're going over. It's, yeah. It's getting closer to the end and the budget is a little over as we've talked about. On this sheet, I think it shows about 600,000. If you look at the one we prepared, it might be a little bit easier to follow. That one talks about the overages, but if you look at our. My, my. Our. Oh, it's behind this. Yeah, this, this sheet here for the construction. There's two pages there. And we have 642,000 still remaining in our bank accounts. And the total cost to finish the project, the way we show it right now is about 835. So, we're short about two there. And then the additional things that we have done. With speakers, fusible panels that were needed, the roof repair and so on. That's where the other overages of 400,000. Remember, we do have 300,000 of S R funds that we're planning to use. And then our overall, it's going to be about 3, 3 to 400,000 right in there over. So, okay. That's that budget and update. We are punch listing, they're putting up the flagpole in north and they fill the hole today for that. And then we're putting it up by the end of either tomorrow or Friday anyway. So, we're going to at least get the concrete poured until we get our flagpole up in north. In north, and there's just some little things. I met with Jeff. He popped in. Nice thing about Nico, they don't have a guy just sitting here. He just pops in, says hi, and he goes, so they don't bill us first time. And he just comes in. If he's gotta work on something, then maybe we're building our, you know, whatever, and then he leaves. So I do appreciate that uh, from them.
Are the roofs done?
Nope, they're still going. We had a little roofing incident uh, Monday and today. We had some tar dripping through the roof and we had water today, so they were on it. I made some phone calls today. Yeah, it's getting fixed, and they promised me that. And any expenses, he said if we need to do a change order and change their contract, we'll do that. Cause they're not, yeah. Um, ba-ba-ba-bum. Yeah, so it's just a lot of cleanup, I guess, but we're very close. Questions for me on all of that? Did I talk about going into, oh yeah, I talked about transportation, sorry.
You've talked about reserve cell phone policy, what's the?
Well, MSBA, you know, when the policies come out, we get the red line, right? And we as a policy committee get to look at that. Uh, that just came out, MSB's um, po-cell phone policy is that it's prohibited. Boom, no cell phones. And so we talked about that today, and Joe and Katie are gonna look at it. And they're gonna read through it and make some adjustments to it. The key is, and this is what came from MSBA too, from Terry Morrow, is whatever you decide to do, which is fine, it's a site decision, right? So you can set your policy how you want it. Just make sure it's exactly the same in your school board's policy uh, and in your handbook. They're not disconnected, and that's the thing we talked about today. I said, guys, whenever we come up with, that's fine, we'll discuss it. But then the board policy then has to be the same, or whatever.
This is kind of, I wonder if it's in line with this all this AI stuff.
It's, and John brought that up, so.
You know, a lot of.
Yeah, I know. It, the problem is, right, if you need an answer to a math question, you take it and you get the answer. And I think that's really a lot of that discussion, Lindsay, I think is right.
I think so. I think, I don't feel like it's, I think it's probably due to this new technology.
Yeah, access to, yeah.
You know.
And self-consideration, powerful.
Yeah, it's, they're powered down their computers.
Yeah, yeah.
We actually want our kids to do work. I'm not saying, no, but everybody's gonna be on Facebook saying, your school board's taking away that cell phones. No, we're having a discussion.
Yeah, right, yeah, no, and, and you're right though. We're trying to figure out what is, what's okay. What isn't, I don't know, that's a lot to.
It is.
And the other problem is, or the other concern, of course, for principals, and I get it completely because I was one uh, in the past, is to manage it, to monitor, monitor it, to be consistent. And you can only be as, you know, your teachers need to help you with that too, and it's a team effort. And we just need to make sure we're consistent, and that's, can we enforce the things that we put in our handbook? Otherwise, don't put them in there, right?
Correct.
And so.
Do you know the number, like what policy?
Uh, five something? Five twenty-five or five?
I can't.
Yeah, it's not, I don't think.
Yeah, I didn't see that on here, so I'll just look it up later.
Yeah, yeah, five, five fifteen or five twenty? Yeah, I'm really close.
In the fives.
It's in the fives, so if you go on the website, and, and now the website won't have the red one, and that's a whole piece, that cell phone. I'll get it to you. Can you read it?
I can email it to you.
Can you? Okay, then I'll get it to you because I, I had it. I read it this morning.
Maybe we can look it over sooner than later.
Maybe you can ask, see what it.
Yeah, we can look at it. It's, I'll be honest with you, it's very clear. The way it's written in there, it's prohibited, period. It's like, no, no cell phones, basically. Well, Joe and Katie and Kent are going, okay, I get it, that's ideal, but can that happen?
Right.
So they're gonna work on to rewriting or trying to rewrite it. Okay, the questions from the group. So are there some?
No, 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 they're good. Thank you. Great, seven point one. This is approval of the June twenty-sixth meeting. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries consent agenda, uh, claims and accounts, Laura.
Five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Also included is our treasurer's monthly budget report, um, and also to approve the donation from Little Discoveries. And they wanted five hundred dollars to be used for elementary PBIS. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Maita. Any questions or discussion?
I, I do wanna say if you look at the budget sheet, so this is the final, and we ended up our budget at ninety-six point five-four percent of what we had on our final budget. So we, I nursed that some stuff away and it was.
How mu-how much, from a dollar perspective, is that?
Well, if you look at the sheet, it's uh, almost seven hundred thousand. Uh, and as we talked about, we wanted to remember we used S R funds in that, it's six hundred and eighty-some thousand, so that is reflected there. Um, and so, just wanna say, I mean, we talked about it, we kept track of it, and we were trying to make sure we were doing it. So by the end of the year, this is where we wanted to end up, and I just, just wanted to make sure that your people in the public hear that, and you guys do too that. You can, we're through that. One of the things you'll also notice is the dollars we spent this year in the middle column and what we spent last year in the middle column. Okay, that's a big number difference there, and uh, yeah. Part of that is due to the S R funds, but there's additional funds there that aren't. So just wanna say we're trying to clean up our spending. And I think we showed that from seventeen points, we spent seventeen point nine this year, and last year we spent nineteen point two. So, anyway.
That's awesome. Great job. I think it.
We just, we just hopefully keep getting.
Yeah, that plans that you implemented, I think it was interesting to hear from the um, administration asking of how they liked running their own budget for their own site and, you know, knowing what was being spent. It just keeps everybody more accountable. It's not just coming from your office, it's everybody. We all have to make sure that.
Have ownership, yeah.
Have ownership of it, so, yeah, that's great to see. Awesome, awesome job. Uh, any questions?
What's the frontline technologies? Is that like a subscription or something?
Frontline? Frontline is the uh, attendance, absence. So if you're absent, you're gonna be behind. You're going to frontline as much as. Yep. That's an annual.
It was a large number and I didn't know what it was, so.
Yeah, we pay for that, and I don't know, some days I think we should get, bear with it. Get rid of it so the teachers have to call their principals and say they're sick. Instead of going into frontline and they're like, I'm sick, it's just easier and it's okay, I get it, I understand.
Is it a student system and a teacher system or does?
No, just teacher.
Oh.
Staff.
Oh, just staff. Okay, gotcha.
Everybody. Yeah, no, good question. It's not that, no.
And it's, and you could run, like as an admin, we can run reports and like, if you were our employee, we could run a report to see how many days you're absent, if you're present. And our secretaries look at it and they send out emails every day, like this is who's gonna be gone, this is who's covering or not covering.
Those alternate.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it's, it's not cheap, but it's, it just makes it cleaner and easier, I guess, maybe too.
Yeah. And then, when there's something in the bill packet or board packet, sorry, I wrote it wrong. If it's in red in parentheses, does that mean, like we got it back, right? Or it's?
Yeah, it's confused. Like, red in parentheses isn't negative. Like, you would think it's negative, like.
It's a positive. It's usually got, you know.
Because I think something was listed twice and then it was listed in red. Does that mean we were charged for it twice but giving it back type of thing?
I need to think about that.
It was the synergy one.
Synergy bill from.
It was like fifteen thousand something.
From uh, from region one. I have to go back and look, I apologize.
No, it's. It's just in, it's in the bill, so it's.
Well, let me write it. I'll, I'll check it tomorrow.
They've all overcharged like twice and they refunded us on accident or we were just paying for two separate things or.
My bills, I have my bills mixed up. I usually do.
It's because we're on even trade.
We got it, yeah. No, that's a great question, so let me check in this synergy bill and I'll go through that for some.
All right, any other further discussion or questions? A motion by David and a second by Maita. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? New and unfinished business, nine point one. This is the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fees. Um, this is to approve the first reading of these fees. Uh, it is in your packet. Let's go ahead and get a motion in a second and then we'll have some discussion. Do I have a motion, please? I got David and then Laura's second. All right, so Shannon, I'm gonna let you go over the color-coded here, the yellow and green for us.
Yeah, so we, we highlighted a few areas. I think Brooke and I have talked about, you guys have talked about, we've had multiple meetings throughout the year on different things, that should we make adjustments or not? And as you know, the snack program has been discussed at length. We also, that was also a part of our admin meeting today with Shannon there. Um, Tracy's going to reach out to the wellness committee because she's on that committee to have a meeting to discuss. What if the board decided to just stop the snack program? What would we do? What would the wellness committee recommend we do? What's another way we can do this? Um, so she was gonna send out something so the wellness committee could get together and have some discussion. Doesn't mean the board's doing it yet, but.
I think they're meeting next week.
Okay, so they do have something, yeah. Um, and then how else could we do it? Do we raise the fee? Because, okay, there's free universal meals now, is it? We are having such a difficult time collecting fees. I'd like to be, so bear with us, fee-free, but we also have to pay for things, right? And so uh, we are sixty thousand dollars short this year at the end of the year on our snack budget because people don't pay or we don't charge enough. You can slice it a couple different ways. I, I'm kinda getting to the point where I talked to other schools. They say their best decision they did is they cut the program and they just had parents do it and or teachers work it out with their classrooms. I, um, the wellness committee is, is proud of what they've established and accomplished. I agree with that. I understand what their policy's about. It's just not working. So thoughts from the group on snack?
Just primarily, I'm helping you.
Pretty much. They were talking about adding it to fifth grade, but the fourth K four is already, or pre-K four is sixty thousand dollars in total.
So when I started on the school wellness committee, was one of my first committees, and at that time we were running probably twenty thousand dollars. I mean, this is, you know, now look at this. I'm seven years later and sixty thousand dollars. I mean, that's not a small amount of money. And, you know, I know the feedback, some parents love it. Some parents are like, it's the same snacks every time. Or the teachers say, well, the kids don't like it anymore. They want a Scooby snack or a giant goldfish or whatever, so. I, I mean, I love that they have snack time and that everybody's provided a snack, but I, I agree that wellness should have a discussion. Maybe it looks different.
Yeah.
As if it's great, if it's being wasted or people don't like the choices, should we continue to operate a deficit? When we're looking at our um, reserves and, you know.
Yeah. One of the things.
We're trying to come up.
Yeah, one of the things that Shannon brought up today and wants to share with the wellness committee is that if, if the school district said, hey, we're not doing snack as a district, but it'll be, you know, the school site. So let's say Wayne and Brittany meet with their teachers and they say, hey, let's ask the parents to provide a snack. Shannon said she would be more than happy to have them order through her. So if I'm a parent, I'm a third grader, I could call Shannon and say, hey, can I order, you know, I have to order snack for the kids or whatever, it's my turn or whatever. She said she would work with the parents and give them like four, five, six options. I mean, it's, you know, to kind of appease a little bit of the healthy piece from the wellness committee, that's what they're driving on. To your point, but we need it, I don't know. And she just said, if I can help or I can assist, let me know how I can.
Or do we, or do we, even as a district, okay, we're gonna provide snack on one, one day a week?
Yeah.
Like on Wednesday, you know? I mean, just good discussion points.
I assume you have same issue. If you have parents providing snacks, some parents won't provide snacks.
True.
And then you're gonna have some sort of costs or maybe just one of those snacks that they have.
I know, that's part of this discussion, right? How do you, it's gonna happen for sure, David. So can we also then, the other thing we thought about is, can the school have enough available, so bear with it, to cover when Shannon, the bad parent, doesn't do what he's supposed to do? And can we go grab a bag of goldfish, you know, I don't know, whatever it is? So the kids get snack that day instead of not getting it.
Yeah, they've talked about like having sponsors for the backup plan, you know, like having a stockpile that the school wouldn't necessarily have to foot, but someone would donate and then they can hide those goldfish for a rainy day.
Right, right, right.
So they've discussed a lot of things, but I just, I think some people are maybe stuck on the healthy part, but I think healthy is different in everyone's mind too, because the Scooby snack maybe isn't healthy, but it's under a calorie limit and you don't want a kid bringing a cake for a snack. Like, so.
True, yeah.
I think they've talked about, you know, can kids bring their own, but then some kids won't have and it's always the problem.
The other part though that you brought up, and that's true, that they talk about donations, like that went outside group that would donate some funds to get to stay on the goldfish thing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, so.
No offense to goldfish.
Yeah, no, I love goldfish.
We don't wanna be on the national news.
No, no, no.
We, we love goldfish.
We love goldfish.
We do, we do.
David doesn't like goldfish, okay? David doesn't like goldfish.
Which is there, there, same people are just not gonna do any for us.
It's a concern.
They already know there's a safety net for, I don't care if I go get a snack, the school's gonna cover me any of this, so. The dead meaters, I hate to say those words.
Right.
The ones that don't remember or want to do it, they still won't do it because they know you're gonna have a substitute for them rather than hold their feet to the fire.
Issue.
I think it's hard also, just because some people can't do it.
True.
We have a reduced meal feed for a reason, so if those people can't have a hard time paying for lunch, they probably have a hard time paying for snacks. But that's still, we can't be sixty thousand.
No.
Behind on that, so.
We did talk about, cause our deal with elementary is that like thirty-five percent being reduced. You figure there's another five percent that don't vote for them that would qualify. Or, you know, we're talking forty to forty-five percent that maybe would have a tough time buying that much snack for a classroom. I don't know that, so.
What are we looking at? We're looking at eight hundred students around for a snack per day between preschool to.
It's close, yeah.
Eight hundred kids. I mean, this isn't like we're, you know, two hundred, two hundred kids in an elementary school anymore. We're looking at almost a thousand students.
It's a big number.
It's a, it's a big number and this number keeps growing and, I mean, I've been all for this snack program because of the kids needing, when they were eating at ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty in the morning, making sure they have a snack in the afternoon. But we also are responsible for the school district's money and when it comes to this crossword, the cross rule is a, a dollar amount that's substantial for a pack of goldfish. Sorry, goldfish.
Yeah, yeah, but it's true.
Can we get a deal? Yeah, can we get a year's supply of goldfish? We'll serve it once every week.
Well, it's, you know, what, really what this is coming down to is we need the wellness team. We want them to be a part of the discussion. We're not just gonna make a rogue decision without getting it, but.
Yeah.
And that's what this is about, right?
Yeah.
It's time to have a serious conversation because it's a serious number.
Yeah.
Wellness committee's going to meet. We'll get some recommendations from them and we'll have to make a final decision.
That's another aspect too, where if we do eliminate the snack program and yet people still aren't thinking that our lunches are big enough, you know.
I know. There's a lot going on there. Everything.
Yeah, correct.
I agree. Um, so the driver's ed, uh, I'm not sure why that's yellow. I didn't have any discussions with anybody on that. Does anybody know anything about driver's ed, if we should raise it or where, where that came from?
Um, so I highlighted all of these yellow and shared with like Tracy and me, just so.
So she highlighted or?
So I highlighted it, but she didn't change it, so.
Okay, okay. That is maybe okay, or she feels it's adequate. Okay, uh, you notice the subpay, we talked about that. We currently pay a hundred and thirty for a full day, um, the discussion, and we've had a lot of that in our region. If we do go to a hundred and fifty, we're kind of right in there, um, with neighboring schools, wanna be competitive. I believe Barnesville has had a hundred and fifty. schools, we wanna be competitive, I believe Barnes will be at a hundred and fifty, Holly was like one forty, something like that, Lake Park is around that same number, and it's, I don't know, I guess that would be my recommendation. Uh, I don't know, some people, you say if you had it at two hundred, that would make a difference, some people say it's a hundred and fifty, it wouldn't make a difference. I don't know where that breaking point is, but I think we need to be adding money to it, so.
Yeah, competitive, but.
Yep.
I mean, I suppose everybody's feeling about that, I feel.
I think anything to help with the substitute situation is.
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree, and I think, yeah, I mean, I just, sharing with Shannon, and I don't feel older, but I had a veteran in today, he's an older gentleman, he subs up in the northern part of the state, his take home is a hundred and five dollars a day, you know, so.
From subbing, yeah.
Yeah, from subbing, so, I, we have to, in the area that we're in, being close to the metro, I think we have to try to be competitive as much as we can afford to be.
Yeah, eh, you know, you know what our numbers were, it was a hundred and forty thousand we spent, so.
Yeah.
Some of that's on our own teachers helping out their neighbor, and, you know, taking on kids, but.
Yeah, I mean.
That was thirty thousand, we spent a hundred and ten to outside sources, so.
Yeah, a hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to live, yeah.
For the childhood.
I'm confused on the bus transportation part, for three day, because we're not doing three day, are we?
Yeah, I bet you she didn't do anything to this either.
Or the four day.
Um, I, that's why maybe she didn't change it, so maybe we just need to eliminate.
Can we clarify with Tracy, this is our first reading, so if you just wanna double check with her again on those, um, on those dates.
Yeah, the one thing you noticed that she did change, though, in add here, so the ECF class only, the half days and the full-time daycare, those fees are based on what we just decided here a couple months ago, or whatever it was, we made those decisions on the fees, remember, for early childhood? The one eighties and the one hundreds and the.
So it is sixty dollars a month? That's what it says?
If you take the ECF class only.
So that's the tots, or the preschool, the school readiness? Because I wanna say, I did see it on some sheets that said sixty a week, so I wanna be, maybe we, sixty a week, I thought was a lot.
No, no, no.
But, um, but we'll say different things.
Okay, this says a week, I thought they were all the same.
We have a month, so the ECF class was a.
Okay, I'll check with Tracy on that. I know, I can re, I remember for sure the half days and the full day cares was a hundred and a, and a hundred and eighty, I remember that con- conversation specifically. The ECF class only might, I think it's sixty a week, let me check, I'm gonna verify with Tracy.
Yeah, I just don't wanna.
Yeah, because it's five days, it's five days, five half days.
I don't think this price has increased since my kids went to tots and ECF, so I'd like to say to the public, yeah, it's been the same price forever.
Yeah, I don't know, that's right. Good deal.
See, I wanna, I wanna point out the positives sometimes.
A little, I, but it's now added days, so it's, instead of three days, it's five days.
All right, so our activities and our athletics, um, we see that they went up, and after having multiple teams go to state, uh, I think this is appropriate, because, you know, we, kids were running out of money. Especially, yeah, it just, it was too, not enough for them to be down there all day.
Well, you go to McDonald's, and you get a value meal, and it's gonna cash you fourteen, fifteen bucks.
Yeah.
And you're given a ten, I mean, to get him a.
Lunch for that.
I, I mean.
For lunch, yeah.
Yes, this two dollar increase across the board.
Yeah.
I think the only reason why it kinda works is that breakfast, hopefully, they get continental, so that ten bucks can go towards lunch and supper, or dinner, or anything, I, I, because it's, it's still.
Yes, I would think twelve or fourteen's enough.
That's kinda where I say this.
Up, up here, it probably would be, without the cities, you're gonna get like a half of bagel for lunch, and a slice of cheese for that rice company.
I know. I don't know, but it's not, it doesn't happen a ton, so it's not a ton of money. Listen to me just stick on the ton of money, but, but, I don't know, it's, it did need an increase, there's no doubt.
For sure.
Um, so the event supervisor, we just crossed it off, I'm not sure what that's about.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, because, you know, before, you know, the AD or designated admin is here, and they're the supervisor.
Yeah.
Of the event, so.
And they have their own deal for that.
Yeah, and they have their own thing, so I agree, we should just eliminate it, because it's hurting confusion.
Yeah, I think we could clean up, and there was nothing on the back.
Nothing on the back.
So.
And we have.
This is our first reading, and so we have some questions here, obviously, some ECF stuff, and now I'll check with Tracy, we could talk about subpay again, I'll, I'll get the list, because I just.
She, did you see any questions about the fee for, the fee for rebel, for early childhood?
For half day, no, ECF, ECF class only, sixty dollars a week?
Yeah, that's what it says, I went on to the, our DGF website, and the registration thing is on here, and it does say fee, um, just wait, early childhood only, it's fee is sixty dollars per week.
Per week, that's what I thought, I thought they were all weeks, so.
When I looked online a few, a couple weeks ago, there were two different spots, one set a week, one set a month.
Okay.
But I think the website was being updated at that point, too, so maybe this just didn't get changed.
I'll double check with her, I'll make sure that we have that, um, this subpay too, just to get you more information on that, and then obviously, we'll get something from the wellness committee to send, okay?
All right, great discussion, any further discussion or questions? We have a motion by David, a second by Laura, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point two, this is to approve the designation of Rep. Anderson Squires in Walsburg, P. Minneapolis as the official school district council for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Mica, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point three, administrative contracts, um, this is to approve the FY twenty-four administrative contracts, Brooke sent this out to everyone, um, to review, we went over it, um, I think several times, so everybody squared away, it should be compared. Do we have a motion? Motion by Laura, is there a second? Second by Mica, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point four, this is certified contract for Shauna Alvarez Middle School, science, BA plus ten, step four, effective the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, do we have a motion? Motion by Brittany, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point five, this is a certified contract for Susan Borrisson, special education teacher, BA step seven, effective the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, do we have a motion approved? Motion by David, is there a second?[1624.25]